Good evening, I'll call this meeting of the Cartersville City Council to order. If you'll please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Hey, good evening and welcome. Join me as we pray. Our dear gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the beautiful weather today. And we thank you for the opportunity to come once again into these chambers to do the city, to do the business of this city. And we thank you for the opportunity to live here and to be citizens here. And we thank you for that, be with us now as we do this business. Thank you for those that are here today who have taken their time to come and join us. We have a special blessing on everyone here, and it's in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
District roll please.
Kerry Hyde, Ward 1, here. Jay Stett, Ward 2.
Here.
Kerry Roth, Ward 3.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward 4.
Here.
Kerry Fox, Ward 5.
Here.
Tafran, Ward 6.
Thank you. Julia, first order of business is the approval of our council meetings, uh, council meeting from back on January 5th. And council, you've had a chance to review these. Now would be the time to make any edits. If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Captain saying aye?
Aye.
Minutes are approved. Mr. Menino, get us started off please with T-21, excuse me, T-23-01.
Uh, thank you, Mayor and Council. This is a proposed text amendment to the zoning ordinance. Uh, the Business Park Overlay District was adopted, I believe, back in 2006. With that, uh, the city and the county adopted, uh, the same standards in both their, our zoning ordinance and the county zoning ordinance, so the development could be, uh, consistent within the, uh, Business Park. With that, there had been a change to the county's, uh, height requirements in that, uh, zoning district about a year ago. Uh, we are amending our ordinance to match what the county did, so the requirements can remain consistent. There was a secondary amendment in there. We had a typo. We've corrected that, um, dealing with, uh, parking lot landscaping. But, uh, again, that was more of a typo issue with that. Planning Commission does recommend approval of the proposed changes to the zoning ordinance text amendment.
Thank you. Any questions for Randy at this time? And at this point, I'll open up a public hearing for T-23-01. Ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for against, do so at this time. And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for T-23-01. Council will take this up for final consideration at our meeting on February the...
Second.
Second, thank you. I can look that up ahead of time. Uh, let's see, next item, Randy, you've got that as well.
Uh, thank you again, Mayor and Council. This is our proposed, or our annual amendment to the capital improvements element and, um, community work program portion of the comprehensive plan. Uh, we do this annually because we have impact fee ordinance in place, and state law does require us, instead of every five or 10 years, to amend this every year. Um, with that, with the help of the city departments to update all the data within that particular document, uh, we put a document together that was presented at a public hearing on December 1st. With that, y'all allowed us to transmit it to the state and regional commission. They have reviewed it and approved it. And this is actually a proposed resolution to physically submit it to them, uh, as the version that y'all have adopted. Uh, secondarily, uh, the city and county had done some updates to the comprehensive plan. This will be inserted back into the revised comprehensive plan, so I will be back before the, either one of the next two meetings, uh, when this is inserted into the other document for, uh, an adoption resolution. But this is just for the, uh, for the impact fee portion of it. Uh, with that, we recommend approval of, uh, the proposed resolution.
Thank you. Any questions? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Captain saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next is a series of, uh, first readings of ordinances. Ms. Reed.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item we have for your consideration is to add our PubCrawl cups as an accepted drinking vessel during the scheduled event dates only, as part of our open container district. So, these cups match, um, in, in basically all aspects, the existing cup, except that they are sturdier silicone material, so they are not glass, they will not break. They are not litterable, and one of the things that we've experienced is that while this is a commemorative thing that comes along with the ticket purchase, there can be some confusion between whether the patrons use the cup or the existing permitted downtown entertainment district glass. This would clear up any confusion that exists, um, with the current practice and the ordinance.
Thank you. I got smarter between work session and now, so makes, makes a lot more sense. So, thank you for that. Uh, are there any questions for Ms. Reed on this item at this time? All right, again, first readings. Uh, continue on, please.
And the next item, we are requesting an expansion of the, um, service times for the downtown entertainment zone. So currently, we have service times that, um, are between the hours of 11:00 a.m. and 10:00 p.m. on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. We're asking that you consider expanding those service times to, uh, the same hours of the day, 11:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m., but Monday through Saturday. So we would exclude Sundays from the ordinance unless by special permission with a festival zone, and any of the existing dates that are already noted in the ordinance would remain excluded.
Okay.
Last item, uh, would be a consideration of the map expansion. So, we have our current district outlined in red. Since that was, um, passed last, we've had two new businesses open on the west side of Main Street. So, Mule House Pizza and Nagels Bagels. And we have an existing business on the east side of the downtown district, Largos, that we would also like to expand to include, um, in the district as well, in the open container district.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Reed?
I notice we have a couple of downtown owners. I'd like to hear if they have anything to add to this.
You could ask me if I could ask.
Could you ask them?
Sure.
(laughing).
Jason Frederick's, uh, 39 South Public Square, Cartersville.
And Buddy Frederick, also 39 South Public Square.
Southern Cove, yeah, and we're not roommates. Uh, it's with the same address, it's crazy. Go ahead, if you have questions for us.
Well, is it these, particularly, I know the cups really don't make a, that make a difference for you.
It, it just saves the step of, um, the DDA having to go through their police department to, you know, get that pass for that day.
Uh, 5 and 6, does that, do y'all have any comments on the service times or map expansion?
So, um, I, my, my comments are just from feedback from the public and for the customers. Um, we get a lot of people in that, that make the comment of, you're, you're getting close to a downtown Woodstock as far as, um, popularity and, and the things you're trying to do. And I don't know about you guys, I, I kinda perk up when I hear that, because I, I think downtown Woodstock's pretty neat, and, and I think they're doing something right. And if you look at their economy, it's, it's killing it. Um, now, will expanding that time, Monday through Saturday, um, boost our economy and get us to kill it? No, but it's a great step in the right direction. Uh, we have had zero issues, uh, that we have seen, um, with Thursday, with, uh, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and, and I, I just can't, I can't see anything changing with a Monday through Saturday. So I'm, I'm for it. Uh, the feedback from the guest is, um, everyone that we, uh, that we serve that shops with us has given us nothing but, uh, positive feedback on wishing it would expand.
How, how many people have come in, like, on a Monday through Wednesday that go...
Any, anyone that comes in, um, the store on a Monday through Wednesday, um, typically would prefer to be able to have the freedom to walk outside with the drink. Believe it or not, we get comments more so often than not, "Okay, so wait, I can't do this today? I gotta wait till Thursday?" Yeah, Thursday through Saturday. So it happens more than you think.
You know, they question a lot of times, "Why is it just Thursday, Friday, Saturday? What's wrong with doing it every day?" And we, we kinda feel the same way. So, um, and as far as the expansion goes, um, you know, I, I think it's a great idea. Um, you know, you know, Largos, um, Mule House, and Nagels Bagels are all businesses, uh, that are paying taxes. They're helping, you know, with the economy here in the downtown area. So, I don't see any reason why they shouldn't be included in this. I don't see, I don't see a downside of it.
And this is coming from two guys who, um, we really do not drink that much alcohol, guys. Like, I can't stand beer, and I may have a sip of bourbon a few times a year, so it's not, it, it, this is not coming from a selfish reason. This is, um, we're both very pro-business, and feeling like that businesses that are paying taxes, that are moving in here, taking the risk to grow and make something of themselves should be, um, given the opportunity to do so. And I, I think it's a great idea. That's all I have.
Any questions?
Questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else?
No.
Yep, your name and your address, please, for the clerk.
Nick Philibear, 50th Avenue Drive, Cartersville, Georgia. Um, so I'm one of the owners of the Mule House Pizza. Me and my wife, we started in our backyard and built out the trailers, and then just recently scaled to the, uh, restaurant. I think everyone's had our pizza, so we're thankful for that. Um, we just got passed, we're in this room actually about two months ago, for alcohol permit, which we are blessed that that got pushed through. It's really, it's been a bolster in sales. We, I mean, we don't sell a ton of beer, but when people buy beer, they buy a pizza, which is nice. Um, and so, but we're, we're just blessed. Um, we'd love to be able to be a part of things like the, uh, just some of the downtown events, like the festival-style events, uh, like the, uh, barbecue and brews, just the things that kinda really bring to the downtown. So I feel like just the expansion of the, the zone just kinda helps us kinda not be necessarily on the outskirts, um, but it kinda just helps pull the downtown in, so.
Other questions?
We check all IDs and everything too, so don't worry. We're, we're no, it's no crazy bar, like, it's at the back end of the road.
We've, we've never had anybody stand up here and tell us they don't.
Yeah.[694.73][694.73](laughing).
Even at the alcohol control board hearings, they say so.
There we go. But, thank you.
All right, thanks. Any other questions or discussions? All right, once again, these were all first readings that will be taken up for final consideration at our meeting on February the 2nd. We'll move on to, uh, Mr. Hampton, you've got an amendment to the solar power purchase contract.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, I'm here, I'm a half-inch department requesting approval of the amended, uh, power purchase contract with MEAG for the solar project that we've been involved in for a few years. Uh, I forgot to mention earlier, this does not change the date for when it goes online. It's still scheduled for, I think, Q3 or Q4 of '24. Um, the most significant change from the contract would be, uh, the 12% increase in power costs, which is minimal, uh, still the cheapest source we have, and a reduction in the term from 20 years down to 15 years, with a caveat that, uh, MEAG does have the option to purchase the facility at the end of the contract, a 15-year term. Um, City Attorney's Office has, has approved it, and requesting your approval for Mayor to sign.
Any questions for Derek on this item? If there's none, motions in order.
Motion. Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Captain saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Porter, you've got the next couple.
Yes, Mayor. First one's amendment to Tennessee Street lease. That's the recreation property we bought last year. The, it's with us not making a decision on what our plans are. We're gonna, I'd like to extend the lease another six more months, having them pay the monthly rent of $900 a month, and also maintain the property, mowing. So it's recommended for you to approve one of this lease amendment.
Thank you. Questions, comments, or motions?
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Captain saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Next item is Matthew's Garage repair invoice in September with electric parked vehicles involved in accident. Uh, total cost is $8,236.82, and our net amount will be $1,000 deductible. We'll have to pay, uh, we need to preimburse Matthew's garage for the full invoice first.
Okay. Any discussion? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
On favor to Captain saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Logan, come on forward.
Yes, sir. This is the Munichode invoice for the second installment cost of the city's website and the annual hosting cost totaling $8,700. This budgeted purchase is recommended to council for payment.
Thank you. Any questions on this item?
Well done.
Would you like to make a motion? He's looking very impressed with the presentation.
Yeah, it's his first one, right? So, congratulations.
You didn't have a question for him, no?
Oh, put him on the spot, or you think...
Much to the cost or something, you know?
Are you gonna renegotiate this next year?[877.00][877.00](laughing).
He had no call me.
I'll make, I'll make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Got a motion, a second, on favor to Captain saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Well done. Chief McCann, yes, sir?
So, in, in February of last year, we applied for a grant, uh, to purchase a Linco Bearcat, uh, with the approval of the Mayor and Council. Uh, in November of last year, the grant was denied. Um, so I'm requesting to purchase a Linco Bearcat armored vehicle to be used for high-risk search warrants and SWAT team activities. Um, the cost is $294,159, and I'm requesting a not-to-exceed for $320,000 for the extra equipment which goes on that vehicle. This will be paid for out of the general fund, and it's a budgeted item.
Thank you. Questions for the chief? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve. Second.
On favor to Captain saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. While Chief Carter's making his way up, I'll take a motion to add one item to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
On favor to Captain saying aye?
Aye.
Motion's added. Go ahead, chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The first item I bring before you tonight is during, uh, December, at the Christmas, with the deep freeze that we had, the extreme weather, at that point in time, the public safety headquarters HVAC system, there were two coal, uh, coals that froze, the system froze and ruptured, flooding out the public safety headquarters on the first floor. I bring for you tonight a repair for those items that was frozen, uh, to replace the coal and the hot water coal in the HVAC system. Uh, total price is $34,879. This is not a budgeted repair, however, it will be an insurance claim.
Okay. Um, any questions for the chief on this? If there are none, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
On favor to Captain saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, chief.
Yes, sir. The next item's probably just a little bit more complicated. Back in April of '22, uh, we came before you, and you graciously, at that point in time, you bought two fire trucks for us to replace Engine 4 and Squad 4. Um, we learned at that time that the build-out for fire trucks had gone from 11 to 12 months up to 24 months. So Engine 2 and Engine 4 will wind up being two years older than expected when we get ready to replace those. Well, I'm preparing now to replace Engine 1 and Engine 3, which is due to replace in 2025. We have learned now that the build-out time is 36 months. So if we was to order that truck tonight, it's gonna be at least three years before they would ever grace the city to replace those trucks. So, there again, it's gonna be a little bit beyond what would be expected. In addition, since April, you need to understand also that there have been three price increases, total of $11,000. This has been brought on by increases from Cummings Engines for their powertrain repair. We've also seen a doubling of the tariffs for steel and aluminum on the trucks, and the prices have just slowly rose, about 16%, 17% just since April. The next price increase that we anticipate, which is another 2%, will be on February the 1st. So I come for you tonight initially to go ahead and order the replacement trucks for Engine 1's and Engine 3. Uh, they will not come to the city until 2026, which is still one year beyond what we were seeking. But I also ask you to consider is potential growth that we are looking at going forward, and that would be with Carter Grove with Station 5. Um, we're still three years out on the construction of this truck. Also, tonight, the prices that I have for you, they will lock down the prices and keep us from being subjected to any price increases, further tariffs, and et cetera, for the next three years within the contract. The prices that I bring for you tonight, uh, the initial price of the fir, uh, fire truck, if we order two trucks, is $775,244 each. As I said, this is a 16% increase over what we saw in April. If the Mayor and Council would be so inclined to also take a look at the possibility of going and ordering all three trucks, we can reduce this by additional $3,000 for truck, simply because it saves on the engineering cost, manufacturing cost of three exact trucks coming through the line simultaneously. So really, two options that I bring for you tonight is ordering two trucks for a total cost of $1,550,488. Or a second option of ordering three trucks, one for Engine 1, Engine 3, and Station 5, and the total cost then would be $2,316,732. Uh, we will not have any budgetary impact until FY '25, '26, or FY '26, '27, depending upon when these trucks actually arrive. Uh, but it will lock down our pricing that is going up on February the 1st. So I will yield to the city manager for his recommendations, and any questions for Mayor and Council, I may be able to answer.
Okay, thank you.
As discussed in the work session, obviously Station 5's gonna be forthcoming, and hopefully decision will be coming out of next two days' visioning session with that. And even so, with, uh, as chief mentioned, there's gonna, another fire truck's gonna be replaced. If there's not a decision on Station 5, that you could use that third truck to maybe have a, a year or two ahead of time. But prices continue to increase. My recommendation would be buy three of them, order three of them tonight, lock in the price, and the financing, I know we can get in place when we need to, as it, you know, we get close to that, uh, delivery date.
Okay. And so you have a couple of options there. Are there any questions for the chief on this item? Or for Dan, or for anybody else?
At a point of clarification on this particular manufacturer of truck, uh, this Pierce truck, of course, matches the entirety of our fleet, uh, so we have uniform maintenance protocols throughout the city, uh, with, with all of our fleet. But also, this includes a, a competitive bid from the MPP Gov Consortium, so this is a pre-bid at price to meet, uh, this type of financial obligation. And also, just to make sure, uh, we did a survey, and we did a check with the manufacturers around us. We did KME, we did Rosenbauer, we did Sutford, we did all the trucks. This is an industry problem, not just a Pierce manufacturing problem, and it's not going away anytime soon.
Thank you, chief.
Yes, sir.
Chair, willing to entertain a motion?
Motion to approve option B.
Three trucks?
Yes.
Second.
On favor to Captain saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you, chief. All right, and before we get to the finance statement, the one item that is added.
Um, Mayor, we received an anti-litam notice from, uh, Pan de Twitt, an Atlanta law firm, regarding an automobile accident on Highway 20, um, where they're asking for about $250,000 in damages. Um, however, this was a county vehicle and a county employee driving it, so, um, we are recommending that, um, the city denies this claim at this time, since we're not involved.[1337.15][1337.15](laughing).
Glad we got you on that wall to get us through that one.
Yes.
Chair, willing to entertain a motion?
Motion to deny.
The Atlanta plea?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Correct? Yes.
More, motion to approve the resolution, whichever you prefer.
I've got a motion and a second, all in favor to Captain saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Tom, finish this out on a high note.
Can we talk like this, huh?[1370.15][1370.15](laughing). Sorry, yeah? That was, that was my case. I'm a Mayor and Council. Tonight, we'll be looking at November 2022 and comparing it to November 2021. And the general fund revenues increased over last year by $5.8 million, and the expenses increased by $935,000. Two areas of revenue I look at on a monthly basis are the local option sales tax have been increased there by $824,000. Billing permits and inspection fees have been increased there by about $617,000. Water and sewer fund revenues, revenues increased over last November by $1.5 million. Expenses decreased by about $45,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, decreased debt service expenses, decreased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. In the gas fund, revenues increased over last November by $10.2 million. Expenses increased by $6.6 million. This is due to decreased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase gas, increased capital expenses, and increases in transfers to the general fund. In the electric fund, revenues increased over last year by $2.8 million. Expenses increased by $3.1 million. This is due to increased personnel expenses, increased operating expenses, increased cost of purchase electricity, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. Stormwater fund, revenues, uh, decreased over last year by about $11,000. Expenses decreased by $4,000. This is due to decreased personnel expenses and increased operating expenses. Solid waste fund, revenues decreased over last year by $141,000, and the, uh, expenses increased by $67,000. This is due to decre, I'm sorry, increased personnel expenses and increased operating expenses. And finally, in the fiber optics fund, revenues increased over last year by $1 million, while the expenses, uh, decreased by $10,000. This is due to increased personnel expenses, decreased operating expenses, increased operating, uh, increased capital expenses, and increased transfers to the general fund. And if we look at the cash position for the month of November, total unrestricted cash balances increased, total restricted cash balances also increased. And the SPAS, uh, fund balances, SPAS 2003 has a balance of $59,799.98. SPAS 2014 has a balance of $231,991.10. SPAS 2020 has a balance of $7,988,910.79.
Dan, do you have anything to add?
Wow. Uh, just, again, I, we've done a tremendous job. Tom and his staff has done a tremendous job. The general fund, as you know, is, uh, year-to-date, $7.4 million. Of course, we did get 2.2 million from the sale of GPW, but even without that, we're above last year, and then all the other utility funds are doing a good job in managing that, even through the, I mean, it's, it's a crisis going on. Obviously, Chief Carter brought up tonight about the, the vehicles. I mean, the heavy trucks, everything we have is supply chain issues, whether it's Derek and Electric ordering stuff, costs have gone up everywhere. We're trying to maintain those costs we can, and, and doing, the guys are doing, all the department heads are doing a tremendous job with that.
Agreed. Again, I'll point out, as I have every month, uh, I know, you look online, and people get their utility bills, and a little bit of sticker shock, um, again, everybody up here is feeling the exact same thing, uh, but, again, when you look at the way the city operates with utilities, you can see in the gas fund, our expenses increased 6.6 million. 5.7 of that is from the cost of the purchased gas. When that stuff finally comes back down, your bill's gonna go back down. Same thing with Electric. About 3 million in expenses, 2.6 of that is the increased cost of electricity over last year. So, again, I, we're not making wider margins on this stuff because the price goes up, it's simply a floating scale. And, um, again, we would be probably equally as happy to not have to pay as much for that stuff and pass those savings on to the residents, so. Um, final note, you have any final instructions with council? Tomorrow will be in our, uh, council visioning retreat. We do have the public safety headquarters, and I say that, so people don't think we're going off to the Ritz-Carlton or something, but, uh, we've got, we've got free space, and we're gonna spend Friday and half a day Saturday, uh, charting out a course as we do every year.
We do, sir, and I forgot, Keith mentioned if we could add one other additional item, and I forgot to even, uh, bring this one up.
That's right, and you told me, and I already forgot. So I need, we need to add one more item to the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
On favor to Captain saying aye?
Keith reminded me, qualified staffing, in the past, we've, when Connie and Cheryl were out, we'd need, normally had a retiree come in and work for a day or two. Well, unfortunately, that retiree passed away, and so we need to find somebody as a replacement. We're going to use qualified staffing agency to help us fill that void. We're also going to use them on a temporary basis if we need some assistance, because there's some paperwork might get done that's kind of built up over time. But Keith has looked at the contract, it is money, we do have budget available for that. Again, we typically use a retiree, but I would like to approve to use qualified staffing agency for those services on a part-time basis as needed.
Okay. Chair, willing to take a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor to keep us saying aye?
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Sorry, you gave that to me, and I forgot almost immediately.
As far as the vision, yes, the next day and a half, eight o'clock tomorrow morning, we get started, but it is a good time for the mayor and council, I hope, for getting ideas on the table of what we're doing. It's going to show accomplishments from all our city departments, and then goals for upcoming year.[1704.83]